Governance and Transparency Committee open. Looking around the room, all councillors are in attendance. Before we move on in today's agenda, our CEO, Mr David Farmer, would like to discuss Safety Week.
Yeah, as you can see, I'm not wearing my normal councillor attire. This week is Safety Week and it recognises the importance of safety and the ability of us to bring people into our workplace and send them home in the same condition as they arrive. Ipswich City Council proudly employs over 1300 people and it's very, very critical that we perform our role and discharge our responsibility to create a safe environment. This morning and yesterday morning, the mayor, in a role as mayor and as chairman of Greater Infrastructure and Waste, attended breakfasts and presentations on Safety Week at our depots at Yamanto and at River View. So I just thought it was appropriate to mark Safety Week by attending in high vis, which I wore at the depot this morning.
Thank you, Mr Farmer. We will move on to the declarations of interests in matters on the agenda.
Chair, if I may, may I ask the CEO to explain the new laws that have come into place this on Monday?
Yep.
In terms of declaring interests?
Absolutely.
There have been a raft of changes introduced via the Local Government Act and the Local Government Regulation that came into effect. They were passed several months ago, but they came into effect on Monday via regulation. Most importantly for this meeting, the changes in the conflict of interest provisions gone are material personal interests and now is a prescribed personal interest, which is a very specific set of interests which require councillors to leave the room and declare. They are also required to declare in writing interests, formal interests before a meeting and declare those things through any informal processes the council might go in into a particular matter, not just in a meeting. And some of the legislation provisions will be different, but fundamentally, while in detail they're different, in spirit they're the same. There are those interests which you are required to leave the meeting, which is a prescribed personal interest. And then the second, which is a declarable interest, is where you place that, you advise whether you intend to leave the meeting or not or whether you've put it in the hands of your fellow councillors to determine whether you should leave the meeting or not. Importantly, being a member of a club or society is now no longer a declarable interest. However, the councillors may choose to declare that. Once they do declare that, it is in the hands of the meeting to determine whether they stay in, even though they're not required to determine whether they're a member of a club or society, an ordinary member and not a member of the executive. And I understand there's a matter on the agenda today where there's a number of community-based organisations that are seeking rate relief and rate exemptions and there may be some declarations there which are completely voluntary by the councillors involved and are not required by legislation. And they may choose to make those in the interest of transparency, not necessarily as required by law.
Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mr Farmer. With that being said, I'm happy to take the lead and declare, in accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Jacob Madsen, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in Item 10, Concession for General Rates Various Properties, specifically for recommendation C relating to the Ipswich District Junior Tennis Association. I am a member who partakes in social fixtures on a Wednesday night.
Chair, I move that councillor Madsen participates and votes on Item 10, concession for general rates various properties, Item C for the Ipswich District Junior Tennis Association, because there is no personal or financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is to be made in the public interest. And I also note under the new legislation that councillor Madsen was not required to do this, but has done so in the spirit of transparency.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I need to...? CEO?
No, no, you put it, but you can't vote.
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess I'd move it, so someone seconds it?
I'll second.
Councillor Doyle has seconded it. Any discussion on the matter? Would you all like to vote then on whether to accept the motion put forward by the mayor? Looking around the room, that's unanimous, excluding myself as I didn't partake, because I'm not meant to. Anyway, are there any other declarations of interests in matters of the agenda today?
Through the chair.
Councillor Doyle?
In accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I, councillor Marnie Doyle, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in Item 10E titled Concession for General Rates Various Properties. E specifically relates to property at 39 Termside Road, Eastern Heights, with the owner being Ipswich Hospice Care Limited. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is that I am a member of the Care at the End of Life Collaborative, which is a group of various stakeholders through Ipswich, undertaking some pretty important work for residents of Ipswich facing end-of-life decisions. But that does not incorporate any role on the board of hospice.
Thank you, Councillor Doyle. I commend you on your involvement with such an organisation. Would any councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move it, that councillor Doyle be allowed to stay.
I'll second that.
Councillor Johnick has seconded it. Is there any discussion on the matter?
I'd like to discuss that I will be voting to support this because there is no personal or financial benefit to councillor Doyle and therefore I think a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is in the public interest.
Thank you, Mayor. That being said, shall we vote on the matter? Those in favour? Looking around the room, that's unanimous, bar councillor Doyle who did not partake in the vote. Are there any other declarations of interest today? Well, with that dealt with, we shall move on to Item 1 for today's agenda, the acquisition of leasehold land, Champions Way, truncation. Would any councillors like to ask the relevant officer questions on this matter?
Yes, please, Chair.
Oh, there you go.
Is it a yes?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry.
Couldn't see behind that chair there.
Sorry.
Good mornings. Sonia Cooper, General Manager, Corporate Services.
Thank you, Ms Cooper. This has been an interesting one that we've inherited at the council.
It is.
Do you mind running through what the work is? And I guess why are we looking at the options that we are looking at today?
I can do that. So I'm speaking to this report in place of Brett McGrath, our property manager. He's not able to be here in person today. So Brett has a far more intimate knowledge than me, but I shall do my best. So as the report indicates, what this report concerns is seeking an acquisition and resumption of part of leasehold land located at 133 Champions Way, Willow Bank. The part of the land is required to be taken for a road widening on the corner of Champions Way and that's set out in Attachment 1 to the report as part of a previously approved development application over lot 25 on RP 217490. So council is the owner of the land. However, it has been leased to Motorsport Queensland Limited until the 15th of July 2027, plus a 30-year option thereafter. As the report sets out, there has been meetings by council officers with representatives of Motorsport Queensland over recent months, if not the past 18 months or so. And to date, Motorsport Queensland Limited have not agreed to provide consent to the taking of part of the leasehold interest in the land on part of Lot 11 on SP 108209. This is an issue and this report is necessary as during the process of approving the developer application, the consent of the lesssee was not obtained, as it should have been at the time council approval was provided, without obtaining the consent of the lesssee. And hence, despite all best efforts of officers for their own reasons, Motorsport Queensland are not agreeing, consenting to the resumption of the land that's necessary in layperson's terms in order to allow vehicles, particularly trucks, to reach the industrial estate that is intended to be developed by the developer. The developer has waited for quite some years now for this approval to proceed. So after canvassing all available options that officers could determine, could see, this report, as you're aware, puts forward a recommendation to council that we seek to acquire that land via resumption, if necessary.
Ms Cooper, do we know what the end use is for? What is the developer doing with the land?
We do. We do know that it's intended, it's industrial estate purposes at this time. There's not a lot of other development in the area, as I understand it, but this would seek to be for industrial purposes.
Do we know if they're going to do landfill or a waste energy plant there or have we got no knowledge of or no visibility?
No indications that it would be used for that purpose, but would need to make further inquiries for further detail.
I note on page 16, there's under related parties that say that there are no conflicts of interest declared by current council officers. However, the former chief operating officer of Works, Parks and Recreation Services at council is now employed by Motorsport Queensland Limited and that council position was dedicated with the power to give the general consent as the asset owner back. Was it 2017, 2015? Which may be considered relevant to council's position in this matter. If this individual is now acting on behalf of Motorsport Queensland, do we know any more, any further about that? Is he the person that we're negotiating with or...?
He is not the person that is the one conveying the lack of consent, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you. My only other questions would be in a closed session because they are due to a commercial and confidence, legal and confidence position. All the other questions that have been asked in open.
Do any other councils have questions to make in open session?
Okay, so I'd like to move that we move into closed session as I'd like to discuss, there are confidential legal documents have been given in our packs and I would like to ask Ms Cooper some questions in regards to those legal and confidence matters.
Is there a second for the motion, councillor Doyle? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Looking around the room, that's unanimous. Yeah, we're in closed session. Um. Right. I think, oh, there's a few people walking in still, so we'll just give them a moment. Right.
Chair, may I ask for Mr Tabullo to come to the lectern, please?
Yeah, that's fine. Mr Tabullo?
Good morning. Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Morning, Mr Tabullo. If the developer wished to make this land into landfill or waste operations... Morning, Mr Tabullo. Um, if the developer wished to make this land into landfill, waste operations, or waste energy or incinerator. Uh, could they do it under the current zoning?
Um, only with the application to us for a material change of use for whatever use, um, they were seeking to establish there.
And if they put a, an MCU or a material change of use, that would come to us.
Correct.
As councillors.
Yep.
For a decision.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr Tabullo. Would anybody like to move the recommendations before us today on this matter? Councillor Doyle, is there a second of all the recommendations? Mayor Harding, uh, any discussion?
No further discussion.
Alright, I'll put it to the vote that recommendation A, B, C and D are accepted. Those four, go around the room, that's unanimous. And carried, did you say, say carried? Carried.
Carried unanimously.
Carried unanimously. Uh, we move on to the second item on today's agenda, the acquisition of land for. INF zero two six five two Springall Street, Turban Channel Project. Are there any councillors wishing to ask questions? Councillor Doyle? Like to invite the relevant officer.
Good morning, mayor and councillors, um, Paul Lee, Senior Property Officer.
Um, good morning, Mr Lee, oh, sorry, through the chair. Uh, Mr Lee, just a question around, uh, consultation with the property owner. Um, could you just step us through, um, how those discussions would normally commence and, and be undertaken? Um, noting, um, particular, um, property owner in this situation will be impacted.
Yeah, uh, normally, you know, just through a normal process, you would contact usually by phone or by meta, the owner. And then just advise them, uh, what the project is about, uh, probably offer them to meet them on site and walk through. What's required in the acquisition, and then probably from there, uh, proceed with negotiations.
Okay, and so those negotiations would be with regard to pricing, um.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, that would be one of the items that would be discussed. Also things like if you were taking bound, land on the boundary fencing, things like that. The cost of, uh, the titling, those sorts of things would also need to be discussed as well.
So cost of fencing and perhaps landscaping and so forth would be over and above any monies. Agreed to be paid to the property owner impacted?
I think you'd have an obligation to put things back the way they were before, so, uh, you'd certainly have compensation for the land that you're taking. And then you'd have also the obligation to, uh, put things back the way they were before.
Um, and my understanding is that a resident does have the ability to oppose, although there is sort of an appeals process. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, uh, through this process, usually for our processes, we'll try it through voluntary acquisition first, which is a negotiation process. So, you know, at that stage, the owner can say, no, I don't wish to proceed with negotiations.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, would anybody like to move the full recommendations for this matter? Councillor Johnick, is there a seconder? Councillor Doyle, uh, would anybody care to discuss the matter further? Mayor Harding?
Chair, I guess, um, noting that there's been no consultation with the property owner as yet. I'll be very keen to know if the property owner was against it once they've seen the reasons why, because they look like, um, um. You know, we've, we've sort of had a briefing on this and, and looking at that, um, it's a, a bit of a corner on, on the property there. I'll be keen to know if the, if the property owner was against it before we go further, not the, the view is of the rest of the, of the committee.
Um, through the chair, um, I think Curmair would certainly like to keep, um, kept informed of, of the process. And, and how this particular resident, um, is feeling about the position. Um, I'm not sure, do we, I guess that will be an information request to council officers at some point. I'm not sure now that we, if we make this decision, that it will come back to us.
Yes, I was just looking through the chairs, looking at recommendation A, it does say at the end of council failed to reach an agreement with the land owner. Of the acquisition of land, recognition, B and D will apply, um. Maybe we could amend, um, if the move in the second arrived, into changing that recommendation to make sure that, um, the councillors are informed.
Just add naif if you wanted to.
Yep.
That, uh, councilly updated on the progress of this matter. Just, do you want to?
No, you're perfectly fine. Would you like to propose the recommendation E?
So E, I'll propose that, um. That if, um, council fails to reach an agreement with the land owner for the acquisition of the land, also, I guess, we have to probably put in a recommendation E.
Yeah.
Council, council is informed of progress, and then maybe ma- make an amendment to recommendation to A to say that obviously B, D and A will apply. Or informed of. Progress. Let's check with the, with the CEO, would that, would that suffice that? Councillors.
Oh, that's right, so. The first four recommendations remain the same, and there's just the fifth recommendation.
That's a bit, I'm just, um, yeah.
Yeah, and.
To your chair and see what.
And, uh, BD and E will apply in the last sentence of A.
Right, yeah, makes sense.
And then a, a separate E, which just says keep us in the loop.
Councillor Johnick, are you okay with the, yep, councillor Doyle?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Right, um, we'll put recommendations A, B, C, D and the newly created E to the vote, those in favour of accepting. That's carried unanimously, um, we'll move on to item three on today's agenda. The disposal of subterranean land located at lot five hundred and twenty-eight and five hundred and twenty-nine, Daly's Road, Ripley. Do any councillors seek to question the relevant officer on this matter? No, uh, I will seek a mover for the three recommendations then. Mayor Harding has moved. Is there a seconder? Councillor Milligan, do any councillors wish to discuss this matter? Mayor Harding?
If I may, Chair, just to point out that on the fifteenth of September, um, the councillors were given a briefing on, on this matter. It was, it was quite an interesting briefing, I think, talking about subterranean land, it was probably a new concept for many of us. And that briefing is, is on our website as well, so, um, just want to thank the council office for providing that brief, briefing to us.
Any further discussion? I will put recommendations A, B and C to the vote then, those in favour of accepting. That's carried unanimously, uh, we'll move on to item four on today's agenda. The renewal of lease to Playgroup Queensland Limited over fifty-six Harold Somerville's Road, Carolay. Do any councillors wish to ask questions of the relevant officer on this matter?
I have an alternate motion.
Would you like to propose the alternate motion?
I would.
At this stage?
Um, and I'm happy to speak to it as well, um. I would move that council officers be asked to investigate a non-exclusive agreement, uh, arrangement, sorry, with Playgroup Queensland. And additional uses for the facility at fifty-six Harold Somerville's Road, Carolay, described as leased the in lot one. On RP one seven O seven double eight, on SP two one six nine three nine.
Uh, councillor Queensland, would you be fine if I passed that?
Sure.
For Vicky, for.
Yeah.
No, she has it there.
Transcription, she has it?
She has it there.
Okay.
Agree?
Yes, she does, my apologies.
That's correct.
That's it.
Would any councillors like to question the relevant officer with the motion we now have before us?
Yes.
I do not, sorry, I don't know your name, but, please.
Good morning, mayor and councillors, Carrie Parrott, Senior Property Officer.
I'd, I'd like you to, um. Sorry, my, my question relates to the exclusive lease, the exclusive nature of the lease for Playgroup Queensland. When there is such, uh, a limited usage of this building.
Okay, I'll pass that over to Don Stewart to answer that.
Don Stewart, uh, Manager of Community and Cultural Services. In answer to the question. Uh, Playgroup Queensland is the peak body for Playgroup, which is a, uh, membership body of, uh. Operators who deliver infant care services, not infant care, sorry, infant development services for, uh, the under five age group. It's the, uh, motor skill sets that they develop in the early ages. It is a limited service, uh, as identified in the, in the notes on Tuesdays and Thursdays, for a couple of hours on those two days. Um, they have traditionally over the last five years had that lease under those particular conditions. Uh, and the initial request to roll that lease over has resulted in our decision here today to discuss further.
That's it, I have no more questions, I've come in, but I don't have any more questions.
Uh, Mayor Harding?
Uh, morning, Stuart. Um, I noticed that in the, I think, page one hundred and nine, we talk about, um. Obviously, there's the peppa- peppercorn rent, I think, was it a dollar, a dollar a year, a mil, or a dollar, right? Uh, but also councillors taking on, uh, the long, the maintenance of the building and the, and the properties, do you know what the cost of that is?
No, I don't have that available, no. Um, I would have to get that and, and bring that forward.
Right. We don't know if it's a hundred dollars, a thousand, ten thousand.
The, the, the maintenance would be like most of our assets across council. Uh, there is a, a, a regular probably inspection of the property, uh, depending on the condition. Repair and maintenance would be applied, uh, I would need to.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Stewart.
So council don't actually budget for individual buildings or parks, uh. Their asset management budget covers a general parks budget. But not individual facilities, which can be an issue when we're, um. Trying to validate whether the buildings are. Uh. What would you say, Don, um?
Requiring a, a rate?
Yeah, whether, whether we need to, um, budget for ten years or twenty years and. And whether we should be issuing exclusive agreements for longer terms. So it does make it really difficult when we don't budget for assets, um, and specific buildings.
So, Miss Parrot, may I ask, do you, uh, obviously when people do maintenance, are there timesheets or lists, so we know how much time or time materials that are spent? Roughly each year on the, on the building, or we don't keep that level of record?
Uh. There is one that we've recently asked for, and it's. The summary is very general in nature, we just get a total amount that was spent on a park. But it doesn't go into detail as to what kind of maintenance or repairs have occurred. And at some facilities, the tenants will be responsible for the repairs and maintenance. And other facilities, uh, council will be responsible. So it, it depends also whether the organisations have. Uh, constructed buildings from grant funding that they've received both from local and state government.
Thank you, Miss Parrot.
Um, through the chair, yes, I just, um, have a, a question, I guess practically if we, um. Look to move into a non-exclusive arrangement, from a practical point of view. Um, are there any other examples across our ass- assets where, uh, there are multiple users? Um, and, and how does that usually work, um, with regard to, you know, keys and, and, and days of occupying?
Sure, um, uh, we, we don't have specific examples of multi-users of one asset.
Mm-hmm.
But we do obviously have our assets that change from season to season.
Mm-hmm.
So in, but I guess by default you could determine that as being a multi-user facility. Uh, what we would envisage to do with this facility would, uh, make it a bookable space, um. Those keys would be issued to the person who makes that booking, the appropriate fees would be applied to that booking. And we in the sport and rec and community space manage that very much along a diary-like system. Um, so we know who's, who in the zoo, where they are, when they're supposed to be there, when they shouldn't be there. And that would be issued under a permit and then very specific guidelines to support that occupancy.
So from an operational point of view, we certainly have procedures and structures in place to manage very carefully multi-users of that space. Just keeping in mind there's young children and, and mums and dads potentially using on certain days and, um.
Yes, I think that would be incumbent upon us to make sure that we do have the, we've never done, for the, for example, talking about this specific venue. Uh, a, a infant care potential and a elderly or seniors' space being used, a community men's shed, for example. We would need to put in place in those permit conditions, the requirements for the appropriate protocols and behaviours to be applied. It is manageable, I guess, in answer to that question, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
If, if I could, um, provide some examples, there's really two models that are, are existent in. Three models that exist in La Hu, Authority, there's an exclusive use agreement, which is a dedicated facility that can really only be used for that purpose. The best example is a men's shed where you wouldn't want other people to be using it because there's, you know, tools and equipment and things like that where people can get hurt. Um, then there is what you would call a council managed facility, sometimes one with staff by council where. Uh, it's multiple use and the best examples are the large community centres.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to a smaller extent, that will be a little like level two on our new council building where. There'll be multiple rooms available booked through council and people will be using those, um. And then the third is actually, uh, and it's quite common, is exter- external management of a council facility. Whereby they are the tenant, but they also let that out.
Mm.
Um, and so that they manage, they have the lease or the licence, and then they would then sub-license on a Thursday, it would go to the Bridge Club. And on a Friday afternoon, it would go to the, you know, to the Mud Coits Association, et cetera. Um, one of the critical issues when you have multi-use is lockable storage and, and ability to ensure that. Specific purpose, um, items or activities are, are locked off and not accessed. So one of the challenges with it, with the Playgroup facility is, the report mentions that there is a number of items there that are specifically for children. So we would need to make sure that if there was multiple use, that, um, any other user was able to store their equipment. And any equipment that related to Playgroup was able to be stacked and stored, and that wasn't able to be, um, placed at risk from other users. So there's a little bit of work to occur to create multi-use, but of course, um, it places a vastly gra- a, a lower. Pressure on council if you are able to have multi-use of an asset rather than having to provide five community facilities. You can provide one community facility that's maintained and operated correctly.
Uh, through the chair, CEO, you mentioned, um, you know, lockable storage to ensure equipment, um. I guess is not accessed or, or damaged by another user, and so equally the same applies that, you know, um. I guess, um, equipment that may present safety issues for another user i- is able to be stored away. And I guess that's just what's driving my concern about multi-users. We have proper, or we have su- sufficient, um, operational, um, procedures and processes in place to assure all users, you know.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want the dance club and the child, yeah, and the playgroup to be getting together and.
If, if I may, um, we've recently taken possession of Anzac Hall out at Rosewood, um. It's occupant, occupied by a number of different groups, one of those being the Rosewood Darts Club. Um, now, that's sharp implements, uh, thrown about eight feet, um, at about eight boards throughout that hall. The following day, I have a dance club in there, the day after that, I have the, uh, women's, uh, bridge. I have a number of other, it's a multi, multi-use. There is a, a level of responsibility that is applied to each of those user groups to ensure that. The place is left in a safe and orderly manner, and I'll be visiting that, in fact, tomorrow just to review all of those. So that, uh, we do have safety checks and measures in place, and I guess that's the, 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 the form going forward. We set the benchmark, we agree that that is the way we do it, uh, and we apply those safety provisions in anything that we have where multi-users are in residence.
Because that does present some risk for council, then if somebody is injured on.
Correct. And there may be, maybe occasion where multi-use is not applicable, uh, and that becomes quite clear and there is a risk assess. clear and there was a risk assessment that would need to be undertaken and we would engage the appropriate officers to ensure that we've done that before committing to any form of agreement.
Any further questions? Thank you, Miss Stewart. Thank you, Miss Barrett. Is there a second motion for us before we proceed to discussion? Mayor Harding?
I'd second it, Councilor Quinzelman's motion.
Would any councillors care to discuss the matter?
I don't know.
Councilor Quinzelman?
This is not a concern about Playgroup as a tenant. I would be one of the greatest advocates of Playgroup. It's about the fact that a whole building is being used for four hours per week when in fact there are opportunities for other organisations to use the building. The delay that would be occasioned by passing this motion would not make any difference to the current situation, which is the holding over of the lease. And I would advocate that a building out there, and last night councillor Milligan and I went to the Carolee Progress Association meeting and they feel fairly aggrieved with council one way and another, but the idea that one building, when they're complaining about their access to council spaces, the idea that one organisation has a whole building for four hours a week, doesn't sound to me to be a very good idea.
Could I just clarify, the resolution as it currently stands would move to a report back to council, we'd do some work and council would then consider results?
And just through the chair, I'm fully supportive of Councilor Quinzelman's recommendation for shared assets and collaboration for different organisations, but I do stress that there needs to be a certain amount of due diligence placed upon us to make sure that different organisations can come together and amalgamate safely. So I'm not, I've never stepped foot in this particular property, so I'm not sure of the storage facilities and the like, but I do, I'm an advocate for Playgroups in Queensland. They kept me sane when my children were small, so I'm all for them and I'm all for the safety of the children as well. So if another group was coming into play, you know, due diligence would include blue cards and things of that nature.
We do have a fine example of a multi-year facility, a humanities centre, where there's multiple locked cupboards belonging to multiple groups and they seem to manage it.
Mayor Harding?
Chair, I just want to commend Carolee Playgroup. They are well-loved and liked in the community and reading through the briefings and when we had our briefing by council office on the 15th of September, they only charged three dollars per session. So as councillor Johnick said, Chair, you know, they kept her sane, but it's a great group for mums and parents and it's obviously it's great for the young ones as well. But I also know from going to the Carolee Community Association that they are crying out for more community facilities. I know there's discussions about a men's slash community shed, I think they want to do a men's shed but for the community, not just for men, is my understanding. And I'm just looking at the map on page 114. Are they looking at land near there or that's?
On that same lot?
Chair, the same lot. Yeah, so, and I guess, obviously we see the report going forward, but I would imagine if it's going to be non-exclusive, it would be good to see some type of expression of interest so any community group in the area would have the equal opportunity to have access to that facility.
And that in itself would create the need or not?
Or no, or no need, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's worthy of investigation to see if we can better utilise the asset.
Indeed.
It's all for community need here, so I commend councillor Quinzelman for her motion.
Through the chair, I'd just like to add that I've previously raised during meetings investigating the exclusive use arrangements we have in place specifically in relation to public facilities like toilets. Money's tight, budget's tight. I know there's a number of people in the community who believe, for instance, we don't have enough public toilets available and I've, you know, I see it as an opportunity if we look at some of these exclusive use arrangements, particularly in parks, where we can carve out potentially toilet blocks and make those available to the wider public when people are utilising parks. So something I'll raise again separately for an information.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. I agree, again, if the toilet's there, you know, makes perfect sense to me. Are there any further discussion? I'll put the alternate motion to the vote then, those in favour. That's carried unanimously. Onto item five on today's agenda, the new trustee lease over reserve or heritage historical and cultural purposes, Rosewood Scrub Historical Society Incorporated, 73 Edmund Street, Marburg. Do any councillors wish to ask questions on this matter? All right then. Mayor Harding?
Hi, Miss Barrett.
Good morning again.
I've got a similar question, I know we asked before, but I am keen to know if we know actually the cost of the maintenance because council ratepays do pay for the maintenance and wear and tear on the building.
No, we don't.
We don't keep any records.
No, it's the same situation.
Sorry.
Same situation.
Okay.
So they don't individually budget for buildings throughout council. So I don't think there's any buildings that have a specific budget or expenses.
Okay, thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
This particular lease is involved with the former Walloonshire council building? Is that correct?
Ah, I can't confirm that.
That's fine.
Chair, if I may, I believe it's a former bank.
Former bank, okay. There's a former Walloonshire building around there, that's all. Very interesting. Thank you, Miss Barrett.
Thank you.
Would any councillors like to move the recommendations today? Councillor Johnick? Seconded by councillor Quinzelman, any discussion? Mayor Harding?
Through the chair, CEO, may I ask in regards to the costs of these buildings? I'm not so much, I'm not asking for, do we have a budget allocated, but I would imagine when workers are out and about on their timesheets, I would be saying, yep, spent three hours at such and such a building. Do we have those records at all, just to give us an indication?
I was just in the process of emailing and identifying, clearly, our past practice in this area is not best practice and we need to be costing to individual assets more effectively going forward, even if we may well have an englobo budget. It's not uncommon to have an englobo budget for community buildings. For example, you might have an $800,000 budget for community buildings, but you would have a costing item for each budget, for each building. We should be able to identify and break up those costs. Mr Stewart is about to put his hand up.
If I could ask, so I'm not wanting to create more bureaucracy or any more red tape, but when people are working on roads or on a building, would they keep a timesheet of some sort to say where they're at so we can at least know how much a road costs when it was getting fixed and things like that, I guess? Or if we don't, you just don't know?
Mr Stewart might be able to talk about community buildings?
Yes, I can verify that IED do individually cost out projects. I speak for the projects that I have remit for. North Ipswich Reserve, for example, I would be able to tell you upon request from IED the annual costs associated with the maintenance of that whole facility. That includes the grass and the buildings, electricity, utilities, et cetera, et cetera, as well as labour. So I would imagine that if it exists for that property, it is possible for the majority of our projects and assets around the LGA.
Thank you, Miss Stewart.
But as I said, it's best practice is to identify specific costs, but as I said, you may have an englobo budget. Large assets like North Ipswich Reserve may well have its own budget and its own costing stream, but we should be able to identify costing streams for each of the individual assets going forward.
And I think through the chair, we've discussed in briefings, CEO, about asset management and asset management systems as well, and I think it'd be just prudent for us, since we're spending taxpayers' money, to have a better understanding of how much it is costing to maintain assets.
I would just like to add quickly, with the help of my friend Wikipedia, this building was indeed built by the Walloonshire council who met for the first time on the 7th of July 1913 and until the shire was abolished in 1917, it's heritage listed and interesting piece of our history here in Ipswich. Is there any further discussion?
Did it say when it was a bank or was it a bank or?
That was not part of the heritage submission.
I will put the matter to the vote for those who seek to accept the four recommendations. That's carried unanimously. Onto item six on today's agenda, the extension of contract with Invisia Australia Property Limited to continue to deliver the sustainability reporting platform. Would any councillors like to? Mayor Harding?
Richard White, Manager of Procurement.
Good morning, Mr White. Is Invisia Australia an Ipswich company?
No, no, this, not a local supplier.
It's not a local supplier?
No.
Was there any attempt or way that some parts of this work could have been subcontracted to an Ipswich company?
No, so the original request for quote for these kind of systems was done to a select because of the value being under $200,000. I believe it's attached to this, but no local suppliers were included in that either. And it was done two years ago. The reason we're asking to extend without going back to a local market test for this is the time and cost that's been put into establishing the database. This essentially tracks all of our individual sites, the amount of power, the agreements that we have on those and is being used by infrastructure and environment to start mapping sustainability outcomes as well. So the time we've invested in it at the moment, it's really not beneficial to go back to the market.
On page 123, there's a paragraph there that says, "Due to data continuity and time and resources invested in setting up the system, is recommended that a further contract be entered into." May I ask, who owns the data? Is it the council or Invisia Australia?
Council.
We own the data?
I say that very definitively now, but I will double check that and come back. We own the data in our systems, I don't believe that one goes up into it, so I'll double check.
In our procurement contracts, are we asking for us, for the council to own their own data and perhaps getting it in an open data format so we're not sort of locked into vendors? Is that being looked at?
No.
I know I haven't asked you before, Mr White.
No, no, I would have to have a chat with Tony, our chief consultant. This isn't one of our standard contracts, this is the problem we generally have with ICT contracts. Our standard contract suite is either dealing with capital agreements or goods and services. These kind of ICT contracts, we don't have as many standard contracts in place, although we do have, where we have a non-standard contract, it is a policy requirement, a procurement policy requirement, that I take it to legal and governance for them to review, to ensure it meets our obligations, but I would need to check specifically that they are checking that each time.
I'd see Miss Cooper in the wings.
We really need two dials.
As I knew Cooper, General Manager, Corporate Services, we may be prudent that we take it on notice and come back to you, but my understanding is that, as Richard has outlined, contracts that we enter into generally, but certainly with ICT, we have a number of standard conditions. The general answer would be, yes, we own the data, absolutely. And there are a set of requirements that we set out when we do go to market, certainly currently, if I can speak to that, for ICT solutions and services. But yeah, happy to take it on notice and come back certainly on this particular one just to be sure.
Thank you, Miss Cooper. Thank you, Mr White.
Any further questions? Thank you, Miss White. Would anybody like to move recommendations A, B, C, D and E for item six? Mayor Harding, is there a second? Councillor Quinzelman? Any further discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those who would like to pass A, B, C, D and E recommendations. That's carried unanimously. We'll move on to item seven on today's agenda, the tender number 13902, Commercial Cleaning. Do any councillors wish to?
Thank you, Chair. You know, if it's a procurement, I'm always going to ask about Ipswich companies.
Oh, it's okay. I didn't sit down.
Thank you, Mr White.
Four in a row, so.
Thank you, Mr White. Is TBM a Ipswich company?
Interestingly, this has an Ipswich business branch office. They employ 10 local Ipswich locals directly related to this contract. They also do trade with seven other local Ipswich businesses as part of delivery of this contract. The head office, however, is in Brisbane, so a G1, I believe.
Can I ask, how long have they operated their branch in Ipswich?
I'm getting good because I wrote that one down. So since 2011, they originally started out at Walloon, they're now in Raceview, just off Briggs Road there. So that's their branch office.
Did they hold the contract previously?
They did.
So clearly they're satisfied with their performance.
Yes.
Was there anything in particular that stood out in their tender submission? Because it's obviously it's two year, seven million dollars over two years.
Yes, and I'll double check before I make this declaration. We're getting a saving for council of $400,000 with this contract. So not only are we getting a local business, but we have driven a better price by breaking down, A, the components of the contract and retesting the market at an open process.
May I just like to state that the $6.9 million is over the five years if the extensions are...
Oh, if they're accepted, yes.
Okay, thank you. If all extensions execute, thank you very much for the presentation.
Any further questions for Mr White?
I just wanted to just add, Mr White, that I know that there was a number of other Ipswich smaller businesses that were, you tried to split this procurement process up so that smaller business could take on modules and obviously you're going through a learning phase for this new model going forward so that, you know, it doesn't need to be taken on by such a massive organisation and it can be split over multiple smaller Ipswich businesses.
That's correct, yes.
Yep, so just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Miss White.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to move recommendations A, B, C and D? Councillor Doyle, is there a second? Mayor Harding? Any further discussion?
I think, Chair, if I may, just to reiterate what councillor Johnick said, I think that the city council procurement team tried to break it up into about, I think, nine different contracts, I think councillor Johnick, if that was correct, to try to get smaller supplies to make sure that it went to Ipswich-owned companies. And obviously ultimately that didn't work out, but it is great that the people that have got this contract are based here in Ipswich, employing Ipswich people.
Absolutely, we want to maximise the money circulating in the Ipswich economy.
And through the chair, I just commend our procurement team for reaching out and trying new things to, you know, deliver some of these contracts to our local smaller businesses and learning from the process as they go, so that's all that we can ask for. Wonderful, thank you.
That being said, I'll put the matter to a vote, those in favour of accepting A, B, C and D, that's carried unanimously. We'll move on to item eight on today's agenda, the Contract Library Systems, RFID. Will questions for Mr White, I presume?
Yes.
Well, Mr White, is Bibliotech, Tech, Eca, RFID Library Service, so Library Systems, Australian Proprietary Limited, an Ipswich company?
No, and in this case, again, we tested a number of years ago, but due to the proprietary nature, we are going back to test to the local market for this and as you'll note, 10 years, which may be a follow-up question. um, which may be a follow-up question, um, unlikely to go back, um, for some time due to the investment we're making, particularly with the new libraries. Um, and the investment we've made over the last, um, four years in existing libraries.
What do we actually buy with this? I've read through the submission.
That's all right.
Are we buying the, the RFID chips or?
Yeah, and then the, the frequency and materials around that so that they can scan and so, um, you can imagine we've gone through the trouble of putting them in all the books that we have and, um, that's why we don't want to change horses very quickly with this, there's a lot of investment involved with that. Um, but it's also the scanning and tracking and the, the system around that. Um, and I'm told proprietary nature, the, even the wavelength, so we can't, we can't actually, um, take it to another supplier, so they've got us there. So we will consider that when we go back to the market and I'm sure in ten years' time. Um, the library's team have told me that they, they don't plan on changing that anytime soon, that the, the system that they're using, that's why we're asking for this timeframe. Um, that the, the market may be different, so at that time we'll retest.
So that RFID chip that doesn't track where the, does it track where the, um, borrower takes the book or is it just only is it packed?
No, it's more of a.
Is in and out of the library?
Yes, yes, and, and what it is and things like that. Um, but no, uh, don't believe you can track them.
I note that when we purchased, I think it's two thousand and sixteen, two seventeen, last time, two thousand and sixteen. Um, and I won't get into too much details because it's in the confidential attachment, but there was hardware and hardware and components were part of that. Are we purchasing hardware components with this contract as well?
Um, this doesn't, we, we have got the stuff that we need for the next one. Um, so mostly this, I believe, is to do with, um, the ongoing use and the materials and any other future ones that we open up or, or go down, so future library pods or, or materials that library are doing and, and things like that.
Is there any consideration of if there's any hardware, any other componentry that's purchased that, that, that bibliotech could use an Ipswich based company?
Yes, a- and that part of our review of, um, uh, procurement in general and the next steps we're taking is to start taking more holistic and whole of life considerations and then layering that with our considerations of, of buying locally and sustainability as well as, um, considerations of, of what we can do to develop, um, local industry.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Just a question, please. This, this is a national EU system, isn't it?
Yes.
It's my understanding.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr White. Uh, would any councillor like to move recommendation?
Oh, no.
A, B and C, is there? Is it one of recommendations as well or is it a sum?
It's A one, yeah.
A one. Any discussion? Councillors. Uh, we'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour of.
Uh, Chair, I don't believe we have a second.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Second, uh, councillor Doyle? Sorry, I haven't seen recommendations before with the one, so it tricks me up every time I look at it. Councillor Kunsman move? We'll put that matter to a vote. Those in favour of accepting those recommendations? Looking around the room, that's carried unanimously. Onto item nine on today's agenda, contract monitor WA engagement. Mr White?
Mr White, is monitored WA an Ipswich based company?
No, um, and they're the sole proprietor for Australia for this, this service. Um, it's a I believe a U S based product, um, that has a sub-trade for Australia, that's their sub-licensing. So we don't have options, um, for the individual service. If we were to consider going back out for the outcome that we're trying to purchase with this, um, then we could look at Ipswich. But short term not, and this is one of those ones where I'm sure you're going to ask the question, is what does it actually do? Um, but this is the printing services in libraries where people can print out, um, from and how to track that and manage that, um, public printing.
I guess I'm looking at how we use our, our market leverage, um, and is there any part of, of the, this service, um, that, that could be used, that they could subcontract to Ipswich? So we have a, I know it's a software company, but we have a number of great software development companies in, in Ipswich. Is there any way that we can leverage that in this and other procurements, I guess?
Uh, possibly. I, I, I wouldn't rule it out. I think what, um, the next stage that we're looking at for some of this is how do we, um, the second component of, of buy Ipswich is how do we develop local industry? Um, and I guess for me, um, where we are, we're quite infancy um, of our approach to this, but we are starting to try and identify where we can, um, be strategic and see our contracts coming up. Um, and then approach the market in a strategic way where we consider, uh, is this something that we could do? And, um, we would perhaps come to you early and say, we're planning on targeting this. Um, and that reason we aren't going to take it to market and then we would make that the decision of council. Um, that they want to take this and go to a local supplier and develop that supplier. Which is, is quite a strategic decision, um, but we're not in at the moment.
My last question, Mr White, is, um, why do we actually need the software? I mean, if we just, if, if it's just printing in a library, can't we just use normal software? Um, I mean, that we'd have with, with Microsoft or why do we actually need special software? Or we can use what's embedded in operating systems?
Very tricky question. I'll have to take that on notice unless Ben. But very, very insistent that they need.
I'm making this up, but, uh, it would normally be that there's some form of charging. There'd be a stored value card and, uh, it would be the capacity of a member of the public to be able to print off, um, items off the, off the internet and there needs to be some sort of charging process as opposed to simple and printing work. But that's conventional, but that's not, that's, I guess, rather than.
If I may, I believe UniPrint was in place at university while I was there, so I believe UniPrint does involve charging and tracking of these print more.
It rings true, but I, 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 I will plead.
Knowing which you think I would, but this went up a month and a half ago and I've forgotten now what it was, so I apologise for that.
Thank you, Mr White.
Thank you, Mr White. I would like to move for a ten minute adjournment. Um, those in favour?
Before the vote?
Huh?
Before a vote?
It's a procedural motion that can, those in favour? It's carried unanimously.
Apologies for the delay. Are we on live?
We are live.
We are live now. Welcome back everyone. While we were in adjournment, it became clear that a question which was taken on notice regarding the UniPrint. We now have an answer, so I'd like to invite Mr Ben Pole to provide that.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair, Mayor and councillors. Ben Pole, General Manager, Community Cultural and Economic Development. Just responding to a query as to what exactly the service, the UniPrint service is. So it is a software and hardware for what you might call follow me printing. So this is the public printing available across all of the library services here in Ipswich. This is the software that enables that service. It's been used now for over five years. It's fully integrated into all of the other council systems, back end systems. So any account management, so a user might put funds on their account. They use this system. This system then integrates it into the accounting software in the back end of the libraries as well. So it's been fully integrated into library systems, both software and hardware, to allow for public printing. And the subject matter experts believe it is by far the best practice and the best standard of this type of service in Australia.
Do you know, through the Chair, do we know, Mr Pole, if this pays for itself? Because it's 20,000 over three years and obviously people are paying 20 cents per copy or something. Does it pay for itself?
We certainly would receive more revenue from printing than we're expanding on the service itself. But more to the point, the way that the libraries team have been able to integrate this particular software and this service right across the network creates operational efficiencies. So it allows for self-service users, which allows our customer service staff to focus on other value adds. So the team certainly believes that the way that they've been able to construct this particular software and service has led to operational efficiencies.
Thank you, Mr Pole. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone like to move the recommendations for item nine? Councillor Quinzelman, is there a seconder? Mayor Harding, any discussion? We'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of accepting the recommendations. It's carried unanimously. We'll move on to item 10 on today's agenda, the concession for general rates various properties. Just noting that earlier councillor Doyle and myself indicated a declaration of interest and it was decided individually that we could remain and partake in this decision and discussion. I would like to call on Mr Mullenhow, the rating expert here at council. Indeed, probably the rating expert of the world.
I would. Morning Mayor and councillors, Paul Mullenhow, Treasury Accounting Manager, Corporate Services.
Mr Mullenhow, I was looking at recommendation E or I guess 132 Eagles Street.
Yes.
The Alhada Educational Institute. I understand this report's recommending that this list of organisations, charities who do great work in our city, looking to pay no rates. The Alhada Educational Institute, do you know much about them? I tried to look for them, they were on Facebook, there was no website and I couldn't find them on the ACNC website. But can you tell us a little bit about them?
There's not a lot more I can add in terms of that particular organisation that's not only contained in the papers. You might have noted from the constitution that's attached, the work that they do in and around the charitable works, education etcetera. There is an Alhada International School. However, it's unclear whether or not this particular organisation has a particular affiliation with that one or not. The assessment that the officers will have done in looking at the concession will have looked at its eligibility from an organisational perspective, which it will meet in terms of concession policy and then the activities that we understand are being conducted on a particular property. The property itself is a relatively small building and used for the education of girls.
Right. And I understand there's quite a process for an organisation to become a registered charity, with the ACNC, the Australian Government. Not the objects of the company. But I also Googled the address, it also came with a business address as well, Interior Stone. So do you know if a business is being conducted from that property as well?
We don't believe that there's a business being conducted from there. The desktop analysis that we've done suggests it is being used for that particular purpose, the educational purpose. No, I'm sorry, I can't speak to it. We can seek further clarification on that matter. But we don't believe that that's occurring. We believe it is the educational purposes there.
Through the Chair, I just had a quick question around the ongoing due diligence that you guys do behind the scenes in assessing. You've referred to desktop analysis. Could you just...
So from a, in a process sense, what we try and do is limit the number of times that we would have to actually physically go and visit a property. The desktop analysis involves looking at things like Google, Wikipedia, internet searches. Where those things don't yield you sufficient enough information or you require more information, we would generally go back to the property owner or the person making the application to seek further clarification around what they're doing, the activities that are being conducted. It would be rare that that doesn't yield you enough information to actually allow you to go and do it. But on occasions, we have gone out to do what I would call a pass by, a drive by. And if that still doesn't yield you sufficient issues, we can make contact with the property owners and seek to actually enter the property to understand what they're actually undertaking.
Thank you, Mr Mullenhow.
Any further questions?
So just through the Chair, you will dive into that particular item a little bit further, do a little bit more due diligence.
We can do some further work to understand exactly the nature of the organisation. I suppose my question for councillors would be what further information are you seeking in terms of that level of understanding of where the organisation is? Is that...
I think during discussion Chair was going to discuss that.
Okay.
Alright, okay. Thank you, Mr Mullenhow.
Thank you.
Right, Woods.
May I have your good amendment please, Chair?
Well, yeah, so it's going to propose that A through N, but if you'd like to split off E or D, treat D in it.
May I ask...
Oh, D, sorry.
May I ask Chair that when you, I guess, maybe I don't need an amendment, maybe I could request Chair that you, I guess, move A through to C and then E through to N as one motion and maybe D is a second one. So we could talk about additional information if that's amenable.
Yeah, more than amenable.
To your Chair when you go to move it?
Would anybody care to move for recommendations A through C to be accepted? Mayor Harding, councillor Doyle has seconded. We'll put that. Any discussion on A through C? We'll put that matter to a vote. Those in favour of accepting, that's carried unanimously. So we'll now have a motion concerning recommendation D on its own. Would anybody like to move that?
I'll move it so we can have a discussion if that's okay, Chair.
Yeah, procedure, seconded by councillor Quinzelman. Discussion for recommendation D.
Chair, when I go through to the ACNC website and look at the financial statement over the last few years, I know that they've paid up to 13,000 dollars in rates in the past. So I just want to do a bit more due diligence on this particular one. I mean, if it's a genuine charity, happy to support it, but I just want to do a little bit more due diligence. So the way the recommendation is at the moment, I will be voting against it and asking that some due diligence is done before it comes to the ordinary council meeting next week. I don't know what the feeling is on the floor.
Through the Chair, I agree with Mayor Harding. I think that a little bit more due diligence is needed for this particular organisation. Just on a quick ACN search through ASIC, the registered office address is in Underwood. So there seems to be a little bit of confusion around the organisation as a whole.
Thank you Mayor and councillor Johnick. I certainly concur that it's worth being prudent and looking into the matter. I'm pretty certain that we'll be able to finalise the matter next week at the ordinary. I don't believe there's any indication that anybody thinks wrongdoings occurred or this assessment is incorrect. Councillors and the Mayor are just seeking further information before finalising the matter. Would that be fair?
Yeah, I think Chair, when I look at page 350 and it goes into the objects of the organisation, that they're very commendable. So may I suggest as the person that moved it, do I guess an amendment to ask for the organisation to do some more due diligence? To amend it rather than having to proceed for a vote on this, but to have some due diligence come back to us next week. See how would that be possible?
Yeah, we're going to take this.
I don't want to hold up any...
No, in relation to the status.
Yes, yes.
Status and operations at that location.
And the organisation?
Yes, the status of the organisation and the operations of this location. And that be subject of a report to the ordinary meeting. So we should be able to do a site visit, do a little bit more research. And possibly, if we're able to get the information, we'll put it for the ordinary meeting, even if it's a late report. If we're unable to do that, then that'll have to come through to the next round.
Wonderful. I'm happy with that amendment if...
Are we happy with the wording? Well, it's undertake...
I'm just making this up.
Councillor undertake Chair.
Don't put the ordinary council meeting, just because we may not be able to meet that deadline.
I'm happy with it as well.
Alright, everybody's happy? Councillor Quinzelman?
I agree.
Any further discussion? We'll put the matter to the vote. We have the amended recommendation D. Those in favour of accepting? That's carried unanimously. Next, I believe the feeling in the room was that moving E through N would be acceptable. Worth noting that these are all pretty established organisations that everyone's in knowledge of. Would anybody like to move E through N? Councillor Quinzelman, seconder, councillor Doyle, any discussion?
I just wanted to comment on the organisations like St Hospice Care, United Care and Tristes of Christ, on the great work that they do. And I think I'm very happy to support this particular motion, to support many volunteers in these organisations who are helping the people in Ipswich.
Thank you Mayor Harding. I believe all councillors feel that way, so thank you for highlighting it.
I'm going to support that comment. I know hospice really well and this kind of thing makes an enormous difference to me.
Indeed, hospice is probably one of the most well-respected organisations in Ipswich.
For good reason.
For very good reason, yes. We'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of accepting E through N, that's carried unanimously. We will move on to the final item on today's agenda. Item 11, report on organisational structure specifically on workplace culture, including the result of the poll survey on whistleblower provisions. Would we like to ask some questions? I'd like to call on Ms Cooper.
Sonia Cooper, General Manager, Corporate Services.
Thank you, Ms Cooper. Thank you very much for bringing this report to us. Obviously it was Transformation Project, I think number 18. One of those major projects.
Number two.
Number two, my apologies. I'm looking at page 530. And just looking at the seven people and cultural strategic objectives.
Cutting there, yep.
Yes. Okay. And in particular, I think the seven are great. I was going to ask you about two of them, which is number three, develop capable and accountable leadership. And five, develop capable and responsive workforce. May I ask how you're going with number three?
Yes, so in relation to developing our leadership, we, as the report mentions, we set out as an early action this year to develop up a leadership charter that aligns to council's values and sets out in a single page document the behaviours and actions that we expect of leaders at all levels of the organisation. ELT members signed up physically and in every extent to that leadership charter and that was published. And we are using that as a key tool in communicating with our leaders the behaviours we expect of them, in addition to the code of conduct, which is a foundation piece. There's always more work we can do and it takes much time to embed things like charters into the, I guess, the fabric of the behaviour of our leaders. So it's certainly a work in progress. That was one piece. We have developed up a, as the People and Culture Strategic Plan requires, we've developed a leadership capability framework that was considered recently by ELT. We're looking at good practice across public sector organisations and broadly. And we're now in the process of seeking to develop up a series of modules. Internally, we've got good educational designers and staff in our OD team, so we'll be looking to be as efficient as we can be, as cost effective. But as, you know, quality, we can be in terms of developing up and delivering leadership modules for leaders across the organisation. There has been leadership development and supervisor training provided before. We'll be seeking to build and extend that. It's very important that the leadership is equipped. We have been also running, in the meantime, leader lunch and learn sessions, working with branch managers and section managers in particular to try to support them in the roles they perform as leaders.
Thank you. And number five, develop a capable and responsive workforce. How is that tracking?
So there is already much training and development in place across the organisation. So once again, as the plan requires, we are looking at what is in place. We're looking to refresh and update that where we're needed. So there is existing competency frameworks and training programmes. We have had some feedback and discussions at the Joint Consultative Committee and the Employee Engagement Advisory Committee that we have as forums to engage with the workforce amongst the other ranges of ways we do engage. And there might be some opportunity for us to streamline the competency framework, for example, so that we can really truly recognise the competency of our workforce and support them to continue to learn and develop their skills to be ever better. So once again, far more work to be done, but we have some good work underway.
Do you have the strategy and the policy?
Do you have the strategy and the policy settings and the resources to do what needs to be done here?
Yes, I believe so. We have a plan. We have a people and culture branch that has through the organisational restructure that was referenced in the report to the last month's committee and briefly referenced here. We have a redesigned people and culture branch that importantly features a very capable organisational development team as well as business partners that are working closely with the general managers and leaders in departments. And once again, it's early days. The branch was really only fully recruited by about March this year. There was a core set of staff, but we've added to that and they've come up to speed quickly and they're delivering. So early days, always room for improvement. Early feedback is positive, that the business partners and the OD team are responding well to the needs and demands across the organisation. But there is a lot of work to do. We need to invest a lot in the workplace culture here at council.
Thank you, Ms Cooper.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to move acceptance of this report? Councillor Milligan, seconder, councillor Doyle, any discussion?
Through the Chair, I'd just like to make a comment. I requested this report and the results of the poll survey be brought to this committee. This is an area that I'm very passionate about and I know we as a group, you know, also feel that it's very important that the good work that's been undertaken thus far to transform the organisation from pre-administration days continues. You know, there was enormous amount of alleged bullying going on within council, both by councillors, allegedly by councillors and council officers. You know, my time here, I've had a number of council officers share stories with me, very, very sad stories and stories that have angered me quite deeply, you know, stories around bullying, cultural insensitivities by former councillors. It's just appalling. So I praise the work that's been done so far and very supportive that it continues in the right direction and I'll certainly be shining a light where possible along the way to ensure it continues.
Thank you councillor Doyle. I would echo that sentiment. Since being elected, it's been pretty clear to me that some of the people that work here at council are truly wonderful in their capability, but in who they are as human beings. I think they should be recognised as absolute assets to the city of Ipswich. They should be supported. And I would just add that I feel quite, quite secure knowing that through Mr Farmer here and Ms Cooper and through everyone else in the organisation in the people and culture branch, there's a lot of hard work going on to make sure that it's a better workplace for council employees moving forward.
Chair, I concur absolutely. The work that we've seen, you know, under the stewardship of the CEO David Farmer has been fantastic and definitely headed in the right direction. But I'd just like to add, I take it as a responsibility of our role as a councillor to almost protect the staff here at council. As you point out, council officers work very, very hard and they are valued, certainly very valued by councillors.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
The CEO spoke to Chair about how the fact that I was out at the depot at Rivie yesterday in Yamato and certainly this morning and yesterday morning, I was told many stories by council officers of having, they would have former councillors ring them directly to do work and direct them and how relieved they are that that doesn't happen anymore. You know, that when they're on the job, they're on, you know, they're doing their job as per the schedule rather than getting an irate phone call from a councillor saying, you must go drop everything and go over to this other location. I heard many stories like that. So I think it's very important. I think when you look at page five three two, the last point, there was more consistent application of new policies for interactions with elected representatives. I think we'd be, as new councillors, we'd be very cognisant of those guidelines. And I think, and it goes both ways, I think we need to know what good governance is and council officers also need to know what good governance is and what the roles and responsibilities of each group and what we do. And... Got a little bit of the mind playing for myself. Thank you.
Right, any further discussion? I'll put it to the vote that we accept the recommendation to receive a note to report. Those in favour? That's carried unanimously. That will bring a close, to close our meeting today at ten forty eight AM. Thank you everyone.
Thank you Chair. May I just sort of, we'll come back at ten past eleven?
Twenty minutes.
Ten past eleven. Thank you very much.